I've ordered the city of Columbia City Council meeting on this April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And we will have the invocation by Dan Davis. They'll all rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Dan?
Lord, bless those who hold office in the government of our city. Help them to do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice, and to use their authority to serve our citizens faithfully. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want me to call the roll?
Becker?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
McBain?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
DiTilio?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
You all received a copy of the April fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, meeting minutes of the city council. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none, they will stand ex approved as submitted. I have no communications to read tonight. I'll move to the reports of commissions and boards. You also received a copy of the planning commission meeting minutes of April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. Any questions on those minutes?
I do have a comment. As I said, I would take it to council. There was a concern about the intersection of County Line Road and State Route fourteen. So I've done my duty. I've brought it to council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman of the Planning Commission, for carrying out your duty. Thank you. Are there any other comments on the submission? If not, the minutes of the planning commission will be accepted as submitted. Um, I would like to make one minor agenda change. I would like to move an item off the manager's report. And I'd like to consider a motion to concur with the city manager and the chief of police to hire Dominic Sinacola the third as part-time patrol officer.
So move second.
Motion second. Do you want me to call the roll?
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
DiTilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. The motion carries. Dominic, can you meet me down here? Try again. Repeat after me. I
Hi. Dominic Sinacola.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the state of Ohio. The charter and ordinances of the city of Columbia, Ohio. That I will faithfully discharge my duties as part-time patrol officer. To which I have been appointed. Congratulations. Next on the agenda, recognition of persons desiring to appear. We have Tom Butch and Dave Hughes from the County Park District to discuss strategic planning for the park district. Gentlemen, you wish to come forward? Stand right here at the podium. Thank you.
Well, then he's buying mine.
I was gonna say, guess who's paying? Thanks, Dave.
And these gentlemen are trustees of the park district, correct? Dave, you are both trustees of the park district.
Yes, yes, yes.
Actually commissioners, but
Called commissioner? Is that what he said?
Yeah.
District. Okay. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everybody. We appreciate this opportunity to talk to council tonight about the Columbia County Park District. As Mayor Noel said, Dave Hughes and Tom Butch were two of the five members of the county park board. It's five volunteers that make up the county park board. Eileen Dre Barden from Rogers Area is the chairman. I'm the vice chairman. I'm from the Salem area. David Forrest is in Salem. And we have Dottie Best from Wellsville and Tim Brooks from East Liverpool make up the five members of the park board. Excuse me. So we've been talking for a while off and on about the idea of a strategic plan or long-term plan for the county park district. Tad Harold, who is the county economic development director, has recently volunteered some of his time to help us do the planning. So, you know, we tried for a levy on the ballot in two thousand and twenty. It was defeated, but it wasn't defeated by a large margin. So we're thinking about possibly putting a levy on a ballot. Again, this is a member, but we're not sure about that yet, but we're talking about it. So we're trying to get around to different city council meetings, village council meetings, township trustee meetings around the county to spread the word about who the county park district is and what we do. Because the county park district has been around since the mid nineteen seventies, but there's still an awful lot of people within this county that really have no idea who the county park district is, that we're the ones that own and operate the Greenway Bike Trail and that sort of thing. So we wanted to have some kind of a long-term plan to guide our efforts into the future. So we want to talk to you a little bit about who we are and what we do. And we want to try to get some input from you folks, if you would be willing to give us some input. Give us some input on what your ideas are, what the park district should be doing in the future. So that's why we're here, basically. So with the handout we gave you to start top there, like I said, we want to do a strategic plan and process. Hopefully a five-year plan that's going to guide us for five years in the future. Right now, the county park district is made up of the Greenway Bike Trail. We have a twelve-mile trail from Washingtonville and Mahoney County Line down to Lisbon. And we have Scenic Vista Park, which is about two hundred and fifty acres, about three miles southwest of Lisbon. We also have Hellbender Bluff County Park out on Liverpool Road, just a little bit, not too far from Beaver Local Schools. And Hellbender Bluff County Park is almost eight hundred acres out there. We have quite a few trails, you know, twelve miles of the bike trail. We have hiking trails at Hellbender Bluff Park and also at Scenic Vista Park. We have the little Supreme Court site here on State Route seven. Just north of Middleton on State Route seven. It was the first, the place for the first, Ohio Supreme Court first met in the state of Ohio. It was owned by the county bar association. It was an ODOT rest area for a long time. It was owned by the county bar association. When ODOT wanted to close the rest stop, they gave it to the county park district. So there's a memorial out there commemorating the the site, the historical site of the first meeting place of the Ohio Supreme Court. So that's one of our small areas also. Currently, we get fifteen thousand dollars a year as a dedicated fund we get as the county park district. We get fifteen thousand dollars a year in local government funds from the county commissioners. We get a little bit of oil and gas royalties from an old well on Scenic Vista Park, and we get donations. So we get in somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-five thousand dollars a year is what we take in. And our budget for the last quite a few years now has been somewhere in the area of about seventy thousand dollars that we spend every year. We think we're being pretty frugal with what we do. But, you know, it costs a lot of money to maintain a bike trail, maintain the two parks. We have one part-time secretary and two part-time seasonal maintenance guys. Those two part-time seasonal maintenance guys do a lot of mowing, seeing at the parks, both parks along the bike trail. So as I said, you know, we're bringing in about twenty-five thousand dollars a year. We're spending about fifty thousand or about seventy thousand dollars a year. We were lucky enough about ten years ago to sign an oil and gas lease for the Greenway Bike Trail. It was just a surface, no surface effectment lease. So with the signing bonuses from that money, that's what we've been operating on about the last ten years, basically. Since we have such a large deficit every year from what we spend and what we take in. So the way it's looking right now, the money from that signing bonus that we acquired about ten years ago, we're gonna probably run out of that in about, probably about three years or so. So we're gonna be pretty much broken about three years. We'll come up with some other funding sources. So that's why we're looking at possible doing a levy this fall. So one thing, a couple of things I want to mention also. Our bike trail was part of two regional trail systems. There's the Great Ohio Lake River Greenway that runs from Asher Beulah on Lake Erie down to the Ohio River. That trail has been in the process of being built for about the last thirty years or so. Most of the trail is built from, you know, from Asher Beulah down to the Mahoney County Line, except for the few miles there. It's more like five or six miles on the south end of Mahoney County, where we go from West Reserve Road down to Washingtonville. That's one of the large gaps left in the trail from the lake to the river. The largest gap left is from Lisbon down to the Ohio River. So, you know, the plan for many, many years was to build the trail along Little Beaver Creek going from Lisbon down to the Ohio River. But because of Little Beaver Creek being a wild and scenic river, there's a lot of scenic rivers concerns. There's a lot of conservation easements that are in place on different property owners, different properties along Little Beaver Creek going from Lisbon down to the Ohio River. So we're not sure if we're gonna be able to build the trail down that way or not. So that's been the plan, the thought. We've never had a written plan. That's what, you know, that's what the idea has been for quite a few years now. So we recently decided that the only way to determine for sure what's gonna be the best way to get the trail built from Lisbon to the Ohio River is hire a consultant, do a very definitive study, a very in-depth study, look at the route, see if it's possible, feasible to go along Little Beaver Creek. If not, come up with an alternative route to get Lisbon down to the Ohio River. So we received a quote from a consultant called Wolford out of Columbus area. They gave us a quote of seventy-two thousand dollars to do this study. We accepted their quote, but it's contingent upon us coming up with seventy-two thousand dollars, of course, to hire them to do the study. We submitted an application to the, for the state and capital improvement budget for the seventy-two thousand dollars. Hopefully we'll be hearing about that in a month or two and see if we get the money or not. But you know, since our trail is part of two state, part of two regional trails, it brings in a lot of people in this county. A lot of people come from the Pittsburgh area, Youngstown area, Akron Canton areas, who ride our trail all the time. And being part of two regional trails, it's gonna bring a lot more people in this county once it's completed. As I said, we're part of that Great Ohio Lake River Greenway Trail. We're also part of a four-state regional trail system, the Industrial Heartland Trail or the I Heart Trail. It's a eastern part of Ohio, western part of Pennsylvania, northern West Virginia, and a little bit of southwestern New York State. It's, the I Heart Trail is a big trail that has a backing of the National Park Service and many, many other organizations across the region. Part, the I Heart Trail is made up of different main corridors. One of the main corridors of the I Heart Trail would be the Pittsburgh to Asher Beulah corridor, corridor, which would take in our bike trail. So once that corridor, the Asher Beulah to Pittsburgh corridor is built, it's gonna, as I said, it's gonna bring a lot of people in this area. Hopefully cities like East Liverpool and Lisbon can become trail towns. Lisbon is, I'm sorry, East Liverpool is currently working on its own trail down along the Ohio River, about four miles from the western side of East Liverpool, along the river out to the PA line. So there's a lot of good things coming in, you know, during the, in the works, but we just have to come up with some money so we can do some things. So at the bottom part of this handout, you have, you can see some of the things we'd like to be able to do in the future, things we're thinking about anyways on the bike trail. The bike trail's been built for twenty-two years now, so twenty-two years is way past the average life expectancy of asphalt. So considering that it's twenty-two years old, it's in pretty good shape overall, but we still need some maintenance. We have some issues with some culverts, tree roots, even up the asphalt on the trail, areas that are, just smaller areas that where the trail just needs completely replaced. So it takes money to do those things, of course. We like to do some extensions to the bike trail, as I talked about, you know, Lisbon down to the Ohio River is the main thing, of course. And I think most of you are probably aware also that Lance recently submitted an application to the Ohio, for the state capital improvement fundings and funds also. We're trying to get a connector trail built from Daytona over here to Columbia. Now, we think that'd be a fantastic thing if it can happen. I think it'd be a great thing for Columbia and a great thing for Daytona, and also just, you know, a great thing for everybody using our bike trail. Just a lot more opportunity, economic development, recreational opportunity also. So Hellbender Bluff, there's a few things we like to do out there. As I said, there's some hiking trails out there already. There's a, what they call bicycle pump track out there now, which is an asphalt trail, asphalt track, which, you know, has a lot of moguls, small hills. People really love to ride that. It's a pretty, pretty big attraction out there. We like to put a, maybe put a swing set up or a little bit of a play area, that type of thing. Scenic Vista Park, a few years ago, we put in an eighteen-hole disc golf, disc golf course out of Scenic Vista. It's been very popular. We haven't got all the tees completed out there. We'd like to have some money in the future where we could complete those tees. Put permanent restrooms out there, maybe. We need to hire some administration at some point in the future. As I said, we're a five-member volunteer board. We all have jobs or other things that we do besides the park district stuff. So it'd be nice to be able to do some, hire some administration people in the future. We like to do some things like a kayak and canoe launch along Little Beaver Creek also. So it's just some of the things that we're talking about. As I said, just wanted to let you know who we are and what we're doing and what we're thinking about doing in the future. And we want to, as I said, we want to get input, you know, hopefully from council, hopefully from some of the members of the public that are here this evening. If you have any input, let us know by writing. On the back of the handout, there's a link to a real quick survey. You can get on and, you know, give your input into what you think, you know, what the park district should be doing in the future. There's a QR code also where you can access it with your, with your phone. Anybody have any questions or comments? Or is it home? I guess I'm sure that Dave's talking a bit there. Sorry about that, Dave.
But, you know, one of the things we need to do is, there's a lot of residents in our county, like, you know, we have the county park system. So that's one of the things we want to do, is get our name recognition out there and find out what residents in this town might do with that park out in the bike use. I know for the most part, it's gonna be like your park here in Columbia, which is beautiful, it's all family residence using it and get together and stuff. That's what we have intended for the purchase of the, for Columbia County. But getting that word out there is sometimes quite difficult. But in the parking lots, if you get on there, you'll see cars from Indiana, Michigan, Pennsylvania, West Virginia, some from Ohio. I mean, it is quite a draw that most people don't know. Like I say, we did put it on the board and hopefully we can do that again and get it passed because fifteen thousand dollars from the county just isn't very much.
My wife and I have been to all of the major things except for the, the one that was the roadside stop thing.
That's in Columbia.
Oh, it is? Okay.
That's right, huh? Yeah.
Okay. Okay. But, you know, they, they really are a treasure to the, to the county. And we enjoy going to the bike trail. A lot of time we walk it rather than ride bikes on it.
Right.
Yeah. And, you know, taking the dogs to any one of these places is just a fabulous thing to do. So.
Thank you. I think it would be a wonderful, as I said, you know, get the connector trail built from Daytona over to Columbia. It'd be great for Daytona, Columbia, and both, and for the whole county. Absolutely. As I said, if you want to get on this, possibly, you know, the survey, or I can give you email numbers or phone numbers if you want to, if you want to contact us. Just any input, we'd appreciate very much.
Have you ever, have you ever tried public service announcement, anything like that? Just got a brief synopsis of this is what we got, or, I mean, I know they have to be short. And I don't know, I don't think they charge anything to do that, but I don't know that for sure.
In two thousand and twenty, when we put the levy on the, on the ballot, that was the first time that we tried to do a little bit of public outreach, really. It was really tough with the pandemic going on, of course. We did a, Tad Harold did a podcast, Forrest, Eileen Dre Barden, myself participated in. That helped get the word out. We had, we did have some news releases, press releases and that type of thing. But it was, it was just a tough year, of course, with the pandemic. It was just pretty hard to get the word out. But we're hoping to get around the different, you know, different meetings all across the county in the next month or a couple of months or so. That's gonna help a lot more to get the word out there.
Sure.
We've been discussing on putting some county park signs up throughout the county of trailhead fifteen mile. Some recognition for people seeing, well, what's that sign mean?
Yeah.
If you go to this site, does it have roadways marked out, how to get to the trails and everything, if you go to your website?
Well, the website does. This is, on the back of this is just a, just a survey, just a couple of questions. Just, you know, asking for your input into what you think in the future. But if you go to our website itself, which is just columbiacountyparkdistrict.com or dot org, either one works. It has all the, you know, information on the different parks on the, on the website. ColumbiaCountyParkDistrict.org or dot com, either one.
Then Hellbender Park. That's named after a salmon, you know. It's, it's a big salmon. Actually, the state can bend their traps in the taste. Most people don't realize that.
I was wondering where that came from.
Yeah, yeah.
The Hellbenders are state endangered species, and Little Beaver Creek has one of the largest populations of them left in the state of Ohio.
Why is it called Water Dogs? If you have a good opportunity that you need something, you want to send your something. A place different to drive.
That was columbiacountypark.com. Columbia County Parks.
District, just not, just not parks, just parks. Columbia County Park District dot com. Actually, I've got, this is an old business card. All right, thank you.
We appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you very much.
Guys, I just want to say, it's impressive what you do with such a shoestring budget, because the bike trail alone, I would think, would take up that much of a budget to maintain every year.
Just, just the porridge on, sir.
Exactly.
Yeah, so so, I mean, I commend you for what you're accomplishing. I really give this some thought and try to pull some, with some useful ideas. And also, you get the word out to other people to let them know that, you know, you guys are looking for ideas, so.
Thank you very much. We're lucky. We've got a lot of great volunteers and, you know, people that make donations and to keep us going, you know, on top of what we do have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Tom, the reporter from Morning Journal wants a card. You're welcome.
Next on recognition of persons desiring to appear, we have David Guy to discuss fireworks at Firestone Park. David?
Read from my phone. Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Manager. My name's David Guy. I've lived in Columbia my whole life. One of the things that makes Columbia and the Firestone Park community great has been the tradition of celebrating patriotic days with parades and fireworks. There's a group representing a large portion of our community interested in continuing the longstanding tradition of festivities, including day-long concerts, contests, and patriotic activities, including with fireworks display in the park on Independence Day, two thousand and twenty-two. In their meeting last week, the Chamber of Commerce made, had known that if they decided not to bring the fireworks back to the park, as they had initially intended last year, another community group would be able to hold Independence Day activities in the park. The group that I belong to has a backing, has the backing of numerous community businesses and organizations, persons of interest, and some individuals and businesses in town have already pledged donations to make that event happen. We know it's under short time constraints, but this group is committed to completing the necessary requirements for safety and approval from every necessary body, and will announce the completed plan once permitted. If the park board is required for permission, we request a special session for moving forward from the park board. We are aware that for the need of insurance, and we are working to making that happen. We have fully insured and licensed company lined up for the fireworks already. We have the support of the chief, of the fire chief, Douglas, and we're also seeking approval of EMS and fire, and the fire department to be on standby. We'd also appreciate accelerated police support. Thank you for your time and support in keeping the community events that make our park and our city the nicest place in America. Any questions for me?
Oh, one, one thing that you need to consider that I haven't seen mentioned is clean up the next morning of the debris from the fireworks. And hopefully you'll be able to find a, some group, maybe a local Boy Scout, whatever, to do that. There's quite a bit of debris that comes with the fireworks. And I live in, I live right next to Funland. And get a little bit in my yard. They don't have to clean up my yard, but they really need to clean up what does happen. And a lot depends on which direction the wind's blowing when the fireworks go off. But that's something you need to consider in your planning.
Absolutely. I actually used to live in your house.
Yeah, I figured that.
Well, I'm, I'm aware that the restrictions on fireworks have changed this year as far as size of the shell, so much further back.
Correct.
And that there's could be X number of houses in that area that need to be evacuated during that time.
So we've looked into the plan that the state has published. It's seventy feet per one inch of shell, which would require two hundred and eighty feet of distance for the patrons using a four-inch shell, which is what the city of Columbia has used in the past. So this is entirely doable at the current site we've used in the past, or if the park board should choose, we would be glad, you know, to make that happen in a different location within the park.
Well, I had heard, and I may be wrong, because I haven't verified this, but I'd heard that it's not seventy feet, it was a hundred feet. I mean, you might, you might want to check that, because that could be critical to you. But I guess I would suggest that you go ahead and contact the, contact the park board and get on their agenda. And
Yeah, they'll meet next Monday.
And if you're gonna try something, start from there. It can't come to council until, like, park board says, yeah, we're gonna go through it. So they've gone through all the process of vetting you and figuring out what you're doing and how you're doing it. And do you have the support of police, fire, ambulance, and stuff like that? Just another situation to consider is holding our fireworks display through the chamber. You're gonna have police support out there. You're gonna have EMS support out there, and you're gonna have fire support out there. Doing two events at one time. I'll just make the statement, it would be next to impossible to do that at the same time. You just don't, don't have the manpower to do it, especially the police department. So, again, those are things that you're gonna have to get cleared. My, my question. So let me get this straight. So we're gonna have two events at the exact same time. So I can envision two fireworks displays going off at exactly the same time.
Well, I can't speak to the other event. And if that event wants to continue to happen, when I was at the Chamber, Chamber of Commerce meeting last week, I was told that if, if an event wants to happen in the park, they have the blessing of the Chamber of Commerce. And that potentially it could save them some money in the long run if they don't, if they choose not to have fireworks out there in the long run. That, that was the comment made to me. I don't, I don't, I'm not gonna speak to whether or not they would have their fireworks display at the same time, whether it would happen in the future. But as for this year, we've pled and requested that they continue that, that event in the park if they should choose to have it at, at Shaker. We would like to, as, as a community, have an event within the city park. We'd like to continue that tradition that's been happening, you know, in our city for a long time.
Like I said, there's, there's an approval process you really need to go through, and that's, that starts with the park board. You're going to have to get down to it.
Wait a second. I'm really struggling with. You're, you're saying to me, are you saying to me that? The Chamber Commerce said, if you guys want to have it in the park, we won't have our, that's what I heard you say.
What I was told was, if we were to have fireworks in the park, it could potentially save them fifteen thousand dollars. That was the comment made to me. I'm not going to speak to whether or not they would continue to have their fireworks at a Shaker or not, or whether they would have them on Independence Day. That was the comment made to me.
And who is this organization?
Right now, it's just operating as, as a group of individuals within the city, um, working under the name of fireworks at Firestone Park. We have the backing of a, uh, uh, several city groups and organizations who, uh, we will name as soon as this event is permitted. But until then, I, I don't feel like it's appropriate for me to, uh, speak out of turn.
I know one of the issues that was raised was now there's different ownership with the football field, which I believe was where the fireworks were. Originally set off and now the school has ownership. Have you addressed, talked to the school board about using the field?
The issue with the school board and, uh, members of the school board are, are in favor of this event continuing to happen. And they will, we will vote on it and apparently are, are going to act on it at their next meeting, but they have pledged support to this event. The fireworks company that we have, have been in contact with has two million dollars of insurance and can provide a copy for you. It can also add anyone needed the policy as a covered person. I guess what we're asking for is your support. Should the park board support this matter?
Yeah, the, it, I think you'll find that a good many of us will. We can't do it in advance to the park board because our saying, oh, yeah, we, we want this to happen, uh, puts them in a place where.
Sure.
You know, they're really the ones who are supposed to, to do the legwork to start with, and then it, once it's all put together, it comes back to us for final approval. So, I wish you luck. Like, I'd like to see him continued it as well.
So, an organization, just so I understand this from a liability perspective, something happens. And. Who, who, who's the organization that's getting this insurance?
So a nonprofit will have to be created when this is permitted, which will be, um, backed by, um, insurance from a, from a community group. That is, is veteran run and led and has been in the community for a long time. Um, I don't want to, I don't, like I said, I can't speak to that until we have permission so that, that organization, uh, can, can address that on their own.
Okay, you're saying that you're going to create a, after you. After you talk to park board, you're going to create a five oh one C three at that time?
Correct.
It's not likely you will get the approval by, the five oh one to C three by, uh, this year.
Either that or another agency will have to step up and use their five oh one C three.
Yeah, and that's, that's probably a better thing to do for this year, working on your own for future years.
And that may have to happen. We were told sixty days. So if, if that can't happen within that, within that sixty days as, as we're told. Then, you know, we would ob, obviously love to have the support of another community agency that's a C three.
Yeah, I've never seen one come true in sixty days. I could, could be wrong, but I've never seen it, so.
You've obviously been doing your homework. And, you know, but I think, I think, you know, you need to, park board, and then, uh, what's our next meeting? Early in May. So it's gotten close, but I, I gotta kind of agree with Dick. I, you know, I mean. How can we say no?
No, park board has to bring it to council first before we even really talk about it, so that's, that's got to be the first on your list.
So I, I mean, I could tell you, I, I really appreciate the hard work you guys are doing. Uh, yeah, and you know, I've come in a couple of times on, on some of your posts, so. Uh, I just, I wish you the best of luck and I hope that, uh, you'll be able to pull this together and come back and see us again in, I mean, next month or, or, you know, a few, several weeks, once you've got all the pieces in place. Again, I'm, we can't vote obviously on it because we don't want to, we can't tell park board, okay, we've already approved this. But I do think it's a great idea and I think, uh, I think it'd be great to, so, great to see it if you can pull it off, so.
I believe that Dave is trying to, David is trying to make us all aware of what they're trying to do. Uh, and, and receive input that we could possibly give them before he goes to the other part of it. The simple thing is, uh, there's a lot, there's a lot of legwork to be done in order to, to have this occur. And there's no sense doing the legwork if they didn't have some kind, and this, it happened to be that this meeting was before the park board's meeting, so to bring it into the awareness factor, so.
I, I, I think it's a smart plan. He's told us what he wants to do. He's given us information. Like Ted said, you've obviously done your legwork. But park board has to bring it to council and say, they, they've looked at and they approve.
They have, they have to prove it.
Yeah.
And then. They would come back to us for final approval.
That's, that's what I said, yeah. Well, yeah, but park board, I mean, if park board doesn't approve it, then.
Yeah, if the park board doesn't approve it, then we're not going to approve it.
Right.
The park board is next Monday night, seven o'clock right here. Okay, and then as we change the month over, the first Tuesday of the month will be in May. And so, things need to fall into, you know, in a, in a, like a pile of bricks. They need to be stacked, so that gives you a timeline. And if you don't make it this year, make it next year.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck there. Thank you.
Landship, your manager's report?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, Columbia Area Chamber of Commerce held their, uh, annual banquet on April ninth. It was a, it's a great event. And, uh, congratulations to council member Dick McVane for receiving a lifetime achievement award. It was a great night for Columbia. Also, uh, Comco received Business of the Year. Notable things, um, in, in their nomination were their donations towards the corridor. You know, in the entrepreneur class and working with the entrepreneur class. So it was great to see, uh, it was a nice community event. And, uh, we, you know, really appreciate, uh, everything that Comco's done, uh, in that, uh, in that corridor, and it's, it's almost done. So, saw another piece today, and, uh, we should have that up, uh, in the next couple of days. Uh, the city of Columbia, I did participate in an international study on the rural innovation being conducted by the OECD. The two-day visit, it was very successful. You know, we had a lot of different focus groups, uh, that started off with the progress committee. You know, just kind of telling them what we've done in the past, what we're going to do in the future. And then we met, met with some, um, business service organizations, city council, county, uh, representatives, which included, um. I'm going to probably forget some people, but, uh, there was a commissioner there, treasurer was there. Economic development, port authority, and then, um. You know, it was, it was a really, really nice event.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
Yeah, the business, uh, YBI was there for, uh, um, you know, service. And, um, they're looking forward to, uh, working with us, so we're, we're, we were really excited about that. But my favorite part was, uh, the school. We, uh, we, we went into the school and filled up the library with about fourteen or fifteen of us, and then, um. In came Trish Miso's class, entrepreneur class this year, that's actually working with, uh, uh, Tim Reisch on the park. Specifically the, the pool concessions. And they, they just lined one end of the, one end of the library, and then behind us was, uh, French class. But, uh, I, I think that, uh, that the young entrepreneurs did an excellent job. It reminded me of a. Panel of experts. They, they were very impressive. Uh, the, uh, people from France and Slovenia just. You know, hit, hit them with questions about, you know, why, why entrepreneurship, you know, why this class? And they, they, they knocked every one of them out as a home run. It was, it was fantastic. You know, the school has a really good program out there, and, um, hopefully, you know, everybody in the state, uh, picks up on that same project and, or, you know, same entrepreneur class. And, uh, you know, adopt one, because it's, it's powerful. They're, they're developing soft skills that are unbelievable. One of the students just took it because he wanted to do public speaking, and he knew that last year that the, the state, uh, uh, school superintendent came to. You know, came to Columbia and, and all those, uh, young folks there got to speak in front of them, so, you know, they're, they're inspiring people. And, um, they recognized the work that the previous class did, and it was very impressive. And then it turned to the French class. They spoke for, French for a good ten minutes. I had no idea what they were saying. And, uh, they were joking around, you know, I'm like, oh man, are they making fun of us or what? But, uh, um, and then what was really neat was there was, um. An exchange student from France, which, I mean, I had no idea. Couldn't have scripted it better. And, uh, that class did a really good job. And I think that, uh, the panel of OECD and RCAP were very impressed. And we had representatives in that, in that room that were from all over, uh, the county. The BAC, John Dillon from, uh, BAC was there. Silver Apple rep, was represented. Um, also the county, uh, Career Center was there. I know I'm going to miss some people, but, uh. Coach Danielle did look into that. I think I gave you a list, but, uh, they, they, uh, it was just, it was a great, that was a great day. And, uh, it was great to see that, you know, that, you know, how well they're doing out there, so. It was a, it was a good two days. Uh, the OECD actually stayed an extra half day. Uh, they weren't planning on it. They went out and toured, uh, hometown. And spent there a half a day, or spent half a day out there.
I'm, just to say, what, what was interesting to me was two things. One is these people came from France and Slovenia. And you don't know a lot about, uh, West, but in talking to them, uh, one, a, a, a couple of them said that they had a six and an eight-year-old children. And they both spoke four languages, the six and the eight-year-old, and they talked two languages in the house. And, uh, it's, it's just such a different dynamic. And the other thing that was interesting to me was when they were, they met with our, our manufacturers, which was really great. We had, uh, the interchange, I think, and I know Deanne was there representing PhD. And, uh, we, I thought it was a really interesting conversation, and they seemed to really, uh, get a lot from it. But we were mentioning that the employers, like Deanne at PhD, were saying that getting employees was difficult. And one of the things was that we had to pass a drug test, and they had trouble, and the one woman from, from Paris was like, a drug test? What's a drug test? And, uh, she was told, like, because in Europe, they're not required to have drug tests in Europe, apparently. And she, she stopped taking her notes. So it was a very interesting interchange, and I think they're very impressed with, uh, Columbia. That's, we'll see in their report, uh, how they feel about us.
And they, they actually left here to go to Washington DC. We weren't sure what for, but I did find out since then. And they met with, uh, the Hill and, uh, you know, kind of shared the results of the three communities that they toured. And, uh, yeah, it was, uh, the Arkansas, somebody.
Time Buff, Arkansas, Gallup in New Mexico, and here.
Yep.
Three, three cities out of, in the whole United States that they selected to do this survey with, so it was, it was, it's something we're proud of.
And they couldn't say enough about how good the, uh, hotel accommodations were.
Definitely.
At the Best Western. They said, uh, they were treated raw away there, so that was good.
Yeah, we picked up a, uh, basically a tour bus, the one that just came here, uh, Calco. And, uh, took them through town and pulled up in front of the, the theater, which said, you know, welcome OECD and welcome RCAP. And, and then we had turned the bistro lights, the red, white, and blue, which is Slovenia flag and, and, uh, France colors. You know, so they were very honored in that, uh.
They couldn't wait to gang up in front of that sign in front of the theater that said, welcome to them. I'll take pictures.
Yeah, so that was neat. All right, so, uh, moving on. Park's working with the, uh, engineers and, uh, plumbers, uh, preparing for the new heater. Uh, we're going to pick a plumber to, uh, install that. Hopefully we can start prepping before they get here. And, uh, there is a part, there's at least one pump that's a little bit of a concern, uh, as far as arrival. So, uh, we're going to try to get a different pump to, uh, get that in, uh, on time. Uh, just to go over a little bit of the things on the agenda, at the last meeting, we did a first reading on repealing the sewer assessment, uh, language that we did last year. And, uh, we'll continue with a second reading on that tonight, but we will have a first reading on the new language that Mark created, uh, with the updated information. Uh, let's see, we got, uh, the, the park board, uh, had been working with, um, Tim on the cemetery rates. And also, uh, to allow us to have special events out at the park and pricing, which we don't have right now. It's basically, we're going to program. And, uh, you know, different programs throughout the year, and, um, you know, that's going to have to be flexible enough so that we don't have to come back to council just because we're going to have a. You know, a leaf walk or something like that, you know, where, uh, you know, some type of, um, some type of programming. So there's going to be, uh, updates on the ODOT paving project, uh, and the stormwater project, uh, on our landing page. The Y and S Railroad is going to be doing a, a project. I'm just going to say in the near future, we're going to be ready for this. But they're basically going to redo the crossing on East Park Avenue, and they're trying to do this before ODOT gets there so they can match up the pavement, okay? So this is an independent project. It's not our project. Uh, they're just trying to prepare for us paving. And, you know, it's the best time to do it's right now. And they're doing a lot of improvements on that railroad, which you've probably seen all the railroad ties and the riprap and everything. So, um, there will be some, uh, road closures in the next couple of weeks, and we will post them on our website, though it's not our project. It, it will be their project, but we'll try to keep you informed. We have a good relationship and good communication with them. So, um, you know, just a, just a heads up that, that is coming. So, uh, right on the East Park Avenue. East Park Avenue ODOT project, um, that's, um, that's moving right along. They're out there doing, uh, crosswalks and, uh, ADA ramps, uh, right now. And then, um, they'll continue to, uh, you know, move, move all the way out through Springfield Road to Heck Road, doing small improvements. Then they'll grind it, and then they'll pave it shortly after that. They do have a couple, a couple other stormwater sections that they have to clean, to clean some ditches. But, uh, that'll be a relatively, uh, you know. Small project compared to, we'll say, the West Salem Street project. Uh, since our last meeting, um, you did, you know, you heard the local, uh, communities having problems with their, uh, gas supplier. We were one of those, uh, volunteer energy, uh, did file bankruptcy, and we're, you know, we're watching that, uh, situation. Our aggregation group is planning to select another supplier. And, uh, we'll try to keep you up to date. Must be pretty loud. That annoys violation. But the important thing is your gas, uh, supplier will not be, or supply will not be, uh, interrupted. Probably saw some things on the news and it's happened, you know, a lot of different communities, uh, throughout the area. On, uh, the West Salem Street, uh, Stormwater Project, we are in the area of Pearl. We're doing the road improvement. If you've been down there, it's pretty impressive. I mean, like, there is no road. It is, there's no road. So, uh, you know, we're putting, uh, rocks down, you know, different lifts and then, um, they're putting curbing down. And, uh, we appreciate, again, the, uh, it's gonna be really nice when it's done. But, uh, do appreciate everybody's patience out there, uh, on Pearl Street right now. Definitely take a double take when you look down there, because there's no blacktop at all. But, uh, you know, you're gonna have a great road, uh, for years to come. I mean, they're, they're building it right. So.
I looked down there, uh, a couple of days ago and I was like, wow. You know, it's not just repaving, it's they dug the road all the way down to the road bed and they're rebuilding it. So it's, it's impressive.
Looks like one giant block.
Four people on Pearl Street.
Yeah, yeah.
But you know what? They won't be complaining about paving for a while.
No, 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 probably just feeders. People call it too fast. But, um.
Chief, you want to keep track of that?
But anyways, we do appreciate, um, we know it's not easy out there. Uh, Street Department, they've been working on, um, uh, did a couple improvements for the corridor. They're gonna be putting that, uh, backdrop up, uh, this week that, uh, Comco made. Uh, we are installing new street signs throughout town and, uh, you know, following the ODOT project, um, you know, closely. Uh, Water Locates, uh, doing those. They have to lower a couple of water lines, uh, since last meeting. Continue to work on the lagoon sidewalls. And we're reviewing some plans for different departments or, or we're, all the departments are reviewing some, uh, development plans, taking a look at, uh, the lines. And they're also looking at that, um, the lakefront golf course, you know, the, the wastewater and water are both reviewing plans and, and, uh, you know, preparing for that large project. Uh, the wastewater department is doing that, uh, major infiltration inflow study. And that's gonna probably take about six, eight weeks. And then we're working with a company to do that. Uh, electric department, uh, working, you know, hooking up temporary commercial service, um, the, uh, the supply chain for, um, you know, I just know the electric and, and the water department, uh, it's, you know, things are becoming harder and harder to find. The lead time on, uh, wire and meters and such are getting, getting kind of crazy. Now you're talking at least sixteen weeks. And so, uh, we're trying to kind of remind people that coming to planning commission that, that, um, they need to look at the new, the new world, uh, timeline, you know, because, you know, just ordering a transformer, ordering just a spool of wires is, if we ordered a spool of wire right now, I think it would be here after Labor Day. So, uh, our crews are, you know, continue to watch and monitor our, our, uh, you know, all of our supplies and all of the departments. But, uh, you know, sometimes you have to, you know, you need something and, and, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna have to wait. Sometimes it's, it's gonna catch up to us at some point. So. That's all I have.
Thank you. In your packet is the, uh, Mayor's Court Report of March twenty twenty-two, the Building and Zoning Department Report of February twenty twenty-two, and also the Building Zoning Department Report of March twenty twenty-two. If you have any questions on those reports? Thank you. I will now move to old business and, uh, ask if we could have a motion to read all ordinance and resolutions. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed the bill. Thank you, Skip. Appreciate it. Uh, you received a copy of the bill list of four nineteen twenty-two. Any questions on that? Okay. Now I'm gonna move to old business and look for a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only.
So.
Second.
Do you have any color roll?
Souter?
Yes.
McVane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three-one-one-nine, second reading. An ordinance approving the potential issuance by the City of Salem, Ohio of its revenue bonds pursuant to Chapter one forty, Ohio Revised Code to finance hospital facilities for the benefit of Salem Community Hospital, located in the city of Salem, Ohio, and the city of Columbia, Ohio pursuant to Section one forty-seven F of the Internal Revenue Code, authorizing the execution and delivery of a public hospital agency's agreement and other documents in connection with the issuance of such bonds.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? Do you have any color roll?
McVane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three-one-two-zero, second reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Tri-County Asphalt Materials, Inc., PO Box three-three-eight, North Lime, Ohio, four-four-four-five-two, for the purchase of asphalt.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Diane, please call the roll.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McVane?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three-one-two-one, second reading. An ordinance authorizing participation in ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program for Annual Contract zero-one-eight dash zero-two-one for sodium chloride rock salt.
So move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McVane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-two dash R dash five-nine-four, second reading. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a partnership agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency, OPSS of Community Development, to participate in the Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, known as CHIP, for the city of Columbia.
So moved.
Second.
Diane, do you call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McVane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-two dash R dash five-nine-five, second reading. Resolution repealing resolution twenty-one dash R dash five-seven-zero, effective May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, which declared the necessity of installing certain improvements to portions of the city of Columbia and assessing certain tracts of land to be benefited through the installation of such improvements.
So move.
Second.
Questions? Diane, do you call the roll?
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McVane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Moving to new business. Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three-one-two-two, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the sale or recycling of personal property which is no longer needed for municipal purposes.
So move.
Second.
Do you have any color roll?
Souter?
Yes.
McVane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three-one-two-three, first reading. An ordinance amending Section one oh, excuse me, one zero-six-two dot point zero-seven of the Codified Ordinances of Columbia, Ohio Regarding Use of Park Facilities in the Firestone Park to add one zero-six-two point zero-seven A three and replacing all other ordinances in conflict herewith.
So move. Second.
So I just, I wanted to clarify what this one was. Uh, this basically is just kind of more of a card block approving stuff. So you'd have to keep coming back to us every five minutes, right?
Yeah, because we're gonna have increased programming. As I said, you know, maybe a, you know, a nature walk or something that's gonna require a, um, you know, a fee. You know, maybe they're gonna have, uh, you know, maybe they'll have to buy, buy something to, to, to do that. And if we have to charge a fee, we'll just base it on that. So rather than coming back and going.
Especially during the summer when we have reduced meetings as well. So.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Do you have any color roll?
McVane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three-one-two-four, first reading. An ordinance establishing rates for the Columbia Cemetery and repealing. Ordinance number zero-eight dash O dash two-four-nine-one and any ordinances or parts thereof to the extent of any conflict herewith.
So move.
Second.
Any comments? Or has not been a price increase for this stuff since oh eight?
Yep, that would be correct.
It's about time.
It's actually pretty surprising how infrequently we do price increases. Yeah, I think we do a great job keeping our cost down, obviously, to not have to go back to in park, cemetery, electric, water. So we're, none of them have increased in a really long time. So.
Do you have any color roll?
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McVane?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-two dash R dash five-nine-six, first reading. A resolution declaring the necessity of installing certain improvements to portions of the city of Columbia and to assess certain tracts of land to be benefited through the installation of such improvements.
So move.
Second.
Any questions? Do you have any color roll?
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McVane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, at this point in the agenda, I was wondering if anyone that's here would like to make any comments? Nothing, Dale. No comment. Okay. Are there any council comments?
I have one quick question for you, Lance. Uh, someone asked me the extent of the west, or I'm sorry, East Park, Springfield, Heck Road. Is that all the, how far in and out are we doing, like, west park or east park?
So, East Park, uh, we're gonna, uh, pave to Springfield Road. And then we're gonna do all of Springfield Road, all of Heck Road.
Springfield Road to?
Heck Road.
Right, I'm sorry. But, um, from Springfield Road on East Park to the fourteen or into town?
Uh, all the way to, all the way to fourteen.
Okay. Thank you.
Why aren't we doing portions of Heck Road on the other side of fourteen, which goes up?
Yeah, all the way out.
Yes.
Through the industrial park.
Yeah, correct, to seven.
Yeah. Well, well, not, not to seven, uh, to the bridge.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's not in the city.
Another bridge.
The bridge.
Go to the bridge.
Go to the bridge, turn left.
There's only the one, I think. So, yeah, that works.
Okay, any other council comments? There ain't none? If I can look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Meeting adjourned.